We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today's date is September the sixth, twenty twenty-two, and this is the Tell City Comic Council. If everybody could please stand and cite pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you all. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. If there are no changes to the agenda, I intend a motion to approve. Motion made by Julia here, second.
I'll second that.
Second by Phillip. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is presentation of minutes for approval. Council, you should have your executive session minutes from August first as well as your regular meeting minutes from August first. If there are no changes or corrections to those minutes, I intend a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Phillip here, second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Gary. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I have one question.
Okay. That's fine.
But I know this under the ARPD funding request, then the twenty-three thousand, I haven't furthered out, which is further two cents of ARPD funds that people are paying of wells and what it was not approved.
Mm-hmm.
Can somebody tell me the reason that that wasn't approved?
Counsel.
I believe we should be coming out of this.
Yeah.
The water department's backed by rate payers.
Rate users.
Rate users. I think that's what the...
That was my recollection, is the gist of it, is that the water department is supported by rate payers, and they have funds that are budgeted for that type of maintenance available. So I believe that was the... Just going from memory, Larry, I believe that was justification at the time. In essence, the water department had the funds.
If you remember correctly, there was for twenty thousand dollars purchase of some water.
Yeah, for a ground entertaining radar system, twenty thousand. So I think maybe twenty-five.
So I will pay this one.
But the council voted. All right. Any questions? Any other questions? We had a motion made by Phillip, seconded by Gary. Any other further discussion? If you have none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'm abstaining because I want Mr. President.
Okay. And Larry will be abstaining. Thank you, Larry. Comments to citizens? At this time, if there are any citizens that would like to make any comments, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please. Seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing part of our meeting. We have Leah Hawkins here and Lisa Gahzen with Indiana Region fifteen, and so they're going to kind of tell us a little bit about this. The public hearing notice has been published in the paper, it's published on our social media page as well, and so I'll let her kind of tell a little bit about this project. We have representation from Ram Tel here as well.
All right. Hi, I'm Leah Hawkins with Indiana fifteen. The city of Tell City is planning to submit an application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs for a grant from the State Community Development Block Grant Light Clearance Program. This program is funded by Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen-seventy-four. These funds will be used for a community development project that will fund a clearance project of the former Perry County Memorial Hospital located at One Hospital Road in Tell City. OKRA requires two public hearings prior to the submission of the application, this being the first one. Public hearings allow the residents an opportunity to express their views on the project or any other project funded with community development block grant funds. Another tool to garner public input is through a survey, which we have provided tonight. If you could, before leaving, fill out that survey, as well as the sign and sheet if anyone was missed. I am taking minutes tonight and will be recording everyone's comments. The minutes of the hearing and the sign and sheet will all be included in the application, so. That's kind of brief, but to sum it up, we are applying for a grant to clear the old hospital.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Leah regarding this project? And I've talked with UV a little bit about it, just to kind of give you an idea. You know, the current Perry County... The former, excuse me, Perry County Hospital site is pretty blight, to say the least. It's definitely an eyesore, it's a safety hazard. Tell City Fire Department responded up there, it's not even safe for the firefighters to go in, you know? So I think this is a great opportunity for the city and Ram Tel both to be proactive and clear the site for future plans of some sort. And I think it's a great opportunity. I want to publicly thank Ram Tel for stepping up and doing this. It's not costing the city any money. None. You know, even the grant, you know, grants are taxpayers' money, get that, a hundred percent, but this is an opportunity that if they hadn't stepped up, the city may have to come up with that share of own to see it cleared at some point through demolition, and I'd hate to see that. So they've done their environmental reviews, one, I think they're working on two now. Is that right? Two's being started, shouldn't they?
The environmental assessments, yes.
Yeah. So they're working on those things, so I'm glad to hear this happen and see this happen, so.
I'm curious, does this want to... Any environmental hazards?
So the phase one is mostly just a history of the building. We won't know more until the phase two, which is currently being...
Because my understanding was quite a bit of debris dumped over the back there on the real site, so. But yeah, we were extremely fortunate, thank you, much, but we were extremely fortunate that firefighters got hurt in the fire. It is definitely a blighted area. I long appreciate the effort we made to develop it to use it properly, so.
Counsel? Any other comments from the council? Okay. Public? If any public wants to come up, if you could come up to the microphone, I'd appreciate it. I know it may be a little bit of trouble for some of you, but I'd appreciate it just so everybody can hear you and it helps Leah with her note-taking for the minutes she's doing.
I guess I'll ask you. Kelly Harding, I just had a couple of questions about the project. Whenever I looked it up, because I saw the notice was online, it looks like it's owned by Hi-Hub LLC. So is that a private developer or... I guess it's owned by a private developer and the city's going to apply for a grant to demolish it, but the grant matches from somebody else, so can you just explain what that...
Leah, you want me to do that? Leah, okay. Thank you.
Yes, it is currently owned by Hi-Hub LLC. They have an option in place with Ram Tel Inc. to purchase that property. That expires in April, which is why we would love to have this project go in this fall, just so that we can kind of get that taken care of before then.
Did you hear that, Kelly? She said Hi-Hub is a private company, but Ram Tel has an option to buy the property that expires in April, so that's why they're applying now. So the Hi-Hub will not be the one actually doing it, it's going to be sold pending all this to the Ram Tel who will be applying and all that.
That's what we need to be...
Yeah.
I didn't understand where that's...
From a legal perspective, that option is a future ownership interest that gives Ram Tel standing to do all of these preliminary steps.
Yes.
Is the city okay to buy for a rent for private property?
Yes.
Yes, the Ram Tel will be considered a subrecipient, and after the five years that the project has to be maintained, the ownership of that property will transfer to the city of Tell City.
Ram Tel being a five-o-one-c-three nonprofit qualifies them as a subrecipient, so the city, the application has to go through a city or county, but they can apply on behalf of a subrecipient as long as that subrecipient is...
Okay.
And that's the reason, Ram Tel is a...
Will we allow them to have that for the city, or we don't know yet?
That's still being discussed. The site, but...
The maximum grant is five hundred thousand.
And we do intend to ask for that full amount at this time.
I believe Cannleton for Ken Clay received the same grant?
Yes, and they did ask for the full amount, and they absolutely did use every penny.
Yeah.
And the local match is at least ten percent, the grant's ninety percent, so fifty-six thousand is the local match.
Which will come from Ram Tel.
Plus Ram Tel's cost of purchasing the site.
Correct.
And then the city takes over after five years, you said?
Yes.
Takes ownership, okay.
But it'd be a cleared level site.
Correct.
No hospital on it, cleaned up, not a blight property.
Correct.
Which is a big deal, because if not, it's probably going to sit that way blight for a while, and still to become a safety and health hazard, I guess you could say.
Do we need it for free?
I believe that is the arrangement between Ram Tel and the city, yes.
That would be filled out in the subrecipient agreement.
Okay.
It's a large...
We hope to... Any other public comments regarding the public hearing? If there are no other public comments, I guess we can end the public hearing part of that one.
Yes, and please do fill out the survey. It's important to garner all of your opinions on how it stands today.
Leah, when do you need all the surveys turned in by?
We would love to have all of the surveys, all public comment before the end of October. That gives us enough time to compile that in a neat...
And this is something we can share on our website, our social media page, because it's online as well, and then we can have others share it to get public comment on the future use of the hospital site, or what their thoughts are on the site, and that we put in our application.
Correct. And we will have another public hearing regarding the same topic later, and at that time, we will have more information about all of the odds and ends of the future use of the site as well.
Great.
Are there any neighbors in the... that want to express why the project's needed, or any residents around the city that want to say the need for the project?
I think my neighbor's me. I went on a ride along the little... the little city waste department, and in the week, we're back there since I have to visit that area. I don't think there's a lot of vandalism and people coming in some other areas. So if you could get a link that I can...
I know, I was born there, my children were born there, and there's no way I would take my grandchildren there right now to show them where I was born. Whereas if it were just a vacant, empty lot cleaned up, I'd be happier to take my grandkids there someday. So I agree one hundred percent that something needs to be done, because this, right now, this place is a stain.
Counsel, you're all citizens of Tell City, so you're welcome at comments too for Lisa. If you want to use your...
Comment?
Who? Oh, yes. Gerald, this is Gerald Gaickley.
Gerald Gaickley, live here now. I'm twenty-three, forty. This is a great opportunity for the city to get rid of an eyesore, that we can get a grant, and Ram Tel has stepped it up to help us remove this eyesore. It's risk and rest of the council along the way. When we allow for a rundown property, sometimes we have to see that cost, and we don't get our money back until they sell that property. This way, the project's going to be funded, for down, cleaned up, in five years of the city. So it's saving the city a lot of money, although we're getting rid of it, even though those people home to walk away from it. I don't know a lot of those people. It is an eyesore, or a far potter, and it was great there, and I know it is bad, because we have to go in there, or the police have to go in after somebody, it's bad. So I think it's a great deal, but I'm for the grant, I'll get the grant, and I've been here to be...
Thank you for your comment.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Committee and Ward reports. We're going to start first with Councilman Larry Kleeman, Ward one.
Okay, if I'm correct, Mayor, I believe tonight is my time to announce a partner of pride.
Mm-hmm.
Recipient, so if you bring the sign. Okay.
Forgot to bring it up.
Okay. I've selected Katie Papano at three forty-seven Main Street. Katie sold her home a couple of years ago, I believe, and moved to Tell City and invested in the vacant historic structure known as the Bullwood, where she lives today, so she is my partner of pride selection for the month of September.
Very well deserved.
Before I mentioned, I was unable to attend the last council meeting, and I apologize for that, of course, a family situation going on that prevented me from attending. I did attend the ARP committee meeting on August the twenty-fourth, attended a joint city council, city-county council meeting on August the twenty-fifth, where we approved the dispatch budget for twenty twenty-three, attended a plan commission meeting, Tell City Plan Commission meeting on August thirty-first, where we approved the development plan for the apartments on Seventh Street. Could not make the August thirtieth ARP workshop, but I did view that forty-minute video, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Ward two, Julie Conery.
Also at the Plan Commission meeting on the thirty-first, we will have beautification meeting on the nineteenth of this month. I think I've given these dates, but just in case, the chili cook-off is November fifth, and Christmas in the park, December third. We're hoping to get everything pretty much planned.
You know, we can give you those times, too. Two to five on the chili cook-off.
I think the time might change. It's going to be two o'clock, I'm not sure about the ending.
Okay. Wendy was here and got it approved at the last meeting. Yeah, Wendy's on top of it. She just stole your thunder.
I think I have to report that.
She just stole your thunder. She did a good job. You guys are doing a lot of good things, and we're very appreciative of everything that beautification you've done.
We have pretty much a new committee. I mean, there's a lot of, quite a few people on it that are new, so it would be...
Good.
That's all.
All right. Ward three, Phillip Simpson.
No report.
No report. All right. Ward four, Mr. Gary Morton.
Couple items here. Start with solid waste. We had a problem with our binder and compactor at Cannleton site, the conveyor belt, which we've had to service a number of times. It got beyond the point of repairing, so a new belt was ordered and has been installed by local contractors, and so it's working well. Another item there that we're attempting to do is, we had an advisory committee there for a number of years, and those folks just kind of got tired of being on that committee, and anybody out there who would like to serve on that advisor committee, we could use some help there. Again, I think the only thing needed is a pro-environmental attitude, because obviously our county's come a long way over the years. If you all remember when we used to burn trash openly in Tell City, and people used to deposit their refrigerators and washers in our county ditches and creeks. We don't do that much anymore, hopefully, so we need people on that advisory board that feel like our environment is something that it's our duty to help take care of, and the air we breathe, that's the only air out there, so we need to do a good job of trying to maintain some quality of air. Let's see what else we got here. Conveyor belt, PCDC, we have the farm-to-table dinner coming up, October one, December one, November one, I'm not sure.
It's in my calendar.
It'll be back downtown here. It was for a number of years until COVID set that back, so it'll be downtown here again. Let's see, the childcare thing is still a major factor for all rural communities, providing we, you know, you hear about workforce, 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 we need more people to work, but we all know the major problem in growing that workforce is provide childcare. People can't simply, there's not enough grandmas and grandmas, aunts and uncles around to take care of the little kids anymore. So childcare is doing well so far, it's been staffed, and it's doing well, but again, I think we could use more room, right, Mayor? That's a challenge there, is we could offer more services if we had a larger place to do that service, so that's about it.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Any statements from the city attorney? No, sir. Any statements from the clerk treasurer?
Yes, I would like to let the council members know that I have hired Madeline Holmes in my office for the position of second deputy. She started the middle of August and is doing fantastic, so. And she did, she is attending the meeting tonight, so she wanted to see what a council board, board of works meeting was like and a council meeting was like, so don't scare her off now.
Is this about your last time to come?
I know, it may be, don't worry. And then I just wanted to remind the council members that tonight, just coming up here shortly in our meeting, we will have the budget workshop where the departments can discuss their twenty twenty-three budget request. Then at the September nineteenth meeting, we'll have a special council meeting that evening to go over the budgets and make any changes or any recommendations that you have at that time. And then on October the third is when we will have our public hearing at six o'clock, and that will be during the regular council meeting that night. And then October twenty-fourth is when we will be adopting the budgets for twenty twenty-three. And I had provided that information. If I need to, again, just let me know, and I'll email it to you again, but I'm sure you have those dates.
That's the same information.
Same information. Nothing's changed.
September nineteenth is the next budget meeting?
Yes, it'll be right after your water board meeting. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Connie. My partners in pride for this month will be kind of splitting it, if that makes sense. I don't think who's ever done that, between both German-American banks, the one on north side and Rivergate. They just had a grand opening in the last couple of weeks of both their locations, that they invested quite a bit of money in both those. They look great, and we appreciate their investment in our community. So I'm going to kind of, two weeks at one and two weeks at the other, because if I picked...
It's a lot.
I know, well, if I picked one, the other whole banks will be mad at me. So I don't want Tina mad at me, or Eric Kelt, the other one, or Gretchen mad at me, and I don't want them, so keep them happy. Traveling sign. Traveling sign this month. So we appreciate German-Americans' investment. That's all the committee and ward reports, so there's nothing to do business, we'll move straight down to new business, your twenty twenty-three budget requests from departments. Counsel, we have several department heads here. Connie and I did meet with a lot of the department, well, all the department heads, and so we want to make sure you've got your budget books. You should. Okay, there you go.
Absolutely.
Red one's there. If there's any department heads that want to come up and make any requests, or council have any questions for departments in their budget books, now's the time to do that, so. Pat, you want, all of us, just go down the road.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. The only concerns I have on my budget is the fuel prices. That's ongoing, we don't know where it's going on, flatline, or if it's going to keep going up and stuff. That will be my big, one of my big expenses for twenty twenty-three, and be gasoline and oil, and then the tires, the tires are going outrageous, too, for vehicles, so that's the only kind of things I'm kind of worried about.
Tires are?
Yeah, oh yeah, tires are going up tremendously.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. Oh, that's one thing.
You know, tires, you've got some oil in them.
We're going back to recap, Ruth.
Okay. All right. Any questions, counsel, for Pat, have anything you've seen in his budget? All right, we'll move on down the line. Alvy, Greenwood Cemetery.
You can look at the line items there for this year's budget and the proposed for next year, and they're all pretty well the same, maybe some of them are even a little less. Some of the things there, we have had quite a bit of, we had a few dollars left at this time of year, and we could probably cut them down a little bit on the line items. The only big thing I'm asking for, to get your blessing, is I need to replace one of my mowers at the cemetery. I've gotten two quotes, the one I'm looking at is a fifty-four inch Cub Cadet mower, that's the zero turn steering wheel. They're quite a bit safer mower than the ones with the lap bars. We have one that's a sixty inch, but we need one a little smaller, and I'm wanting to trade in one of the forty-eight inch Gravelys that we have, so, you know, I can shoot you the numbers here of the quotes, both places, excuse me, the retail was twelve thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars. And we'll go with Canary's up here at Cannleton first. Their bid price is ninety-nine ninety-nine, so they knocked her down there, not quite three thousand, and then he offered me two thousand trade-in for the Gravely, so it knocks it down to seventy-nine ninety-nine. Now, I've got a quote for the very same thing from Hope Equipment over at Jasper. Retail price, same, they're offering a two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollar and eighty cent discount, but he's offering three thousand for the trade-in, so we can get that more from them for sixty-nine ninety-nine twenty. So that's who we need to go with, same machine, we've bought equipment from Hope before, and you know, and I'm just hoping to get your blessing to go ahead and get that more. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Did you try Fisher's?
I don't, they don't sell Cub Cadet.
Okay.
Nope, I did not.
Counsel, at this time, this mower has not been worked into any of the budgets.
It's not in the current budget, and it's not in the proposed budget.
Correct. It would not be in the current budget, because we've not asked for an additional appropriation this year, and I'm not sure it would be there to do it. I'd have to check on that for this year, and for next year, I have not worked it in in any of the budgets. You know, I had, if you, I did include in the letter that I did send you where we were to be within our max levy in that, but you know, if you want me to work it in, I can work it in, but that means you're going to have to make cuts somewhere else within the general budget, or whichever budget you want me to try to work it into.
And we still need to cut thirteen?
Thirteen thousand.
Thousand, okay.
As of right now, from the general budget, yes.
From the budget that's in your folder now?
Yes.
In looking at the appropriation report for this year, from page twenty...
I was there, and then I closed it off. Okay.
It appears we've got between repair of equipment and grounds maintenance, we've got eighty-one hundred dollars left.
We have not received the bill yet on ground maintenance for the removal of trees.
Okay.
And that is going to be right at that four thousand dollars that we have in there.
It's thirty-eight hundred.
Thirty-eight, yeah, so it's going to be right...
And they are in the process of doing that, they're about half finished with it, so we'll get that finished up here next week.
And then if you also notice on our additional labor in the cemetery, currently, we are, have spent, overspend our appropriations, so I will need to be transferring some into that line item too close to the end of the year. Up under personal services.
Yeah, I see that.
So, you know, there's going to be, I'd say, close to, because he is still using and will keep using his part-time employee. Summer help is, you know, we're not using his summer help, but he will still be using his part-time, so that probably will get closer to three thousand dollars or something that will have to be transferred from somewhere up in his budget or an additional ask for.
Okay, it looks like, though, under cemetery labor, again, we've got, it just appears to me that that's being underspent a little bit through August.
We had a employee that was on FMLA, and it exhausted all his time.
Okay.
And so, yes, there may be some in there that we could transfer. I would have to, we would have to sit down and figure that, just to see how much that could be.
Okay.
Okay. All right, moving down the line. Okay, all right, moving down the line, Chief Lenny, Tel City Fire Department.
Uh, for 2023, my proposed, uh, general fund part of the budget, I just looked at, uh, possibly on supplies, raising that four hundred dollars, and that's just kind of what we're looking at on consumable supplies is. Office supplies, cleaning supplies, gloves, batteries, things like that, that's obviously jumped like everything else. Uh, the other increase that I ask for, uh, is in low with public safety tax money, so that shouldn't affect the general fund. And that is in my turnout gear replacement program, uh, turnout gear replacement, um, is a ten-year lifecycle, and we've, I've had that program in place for several years. Replace three sets a year for every, every thirty firefighters every ten years, they get a new set of gear. I have seen twenty, about a twenty-two percent raise in turnout gear just this year. I'm hoping by next year it doesn't do the same thing, and it's splash surge, Kevlar domecks, the things like the bulletproof vests, Derek can probably tell you, they, they probably changed too, they're, those, those things have greatly increased, so. Uh, those are the only two line items that I've, that I've looked at, if any change, is everything else is sufficient as far as I know. And the low is only a two thousand dollar request increase.
Any questions for chief?
Two.
Yes.
So, I mean, how much is, uh, turnout gear for, for a lot?
Per person, I was, I was getting anywhere between three and three, three and thirty-five hundred dollars a person, and I'm squeezing the ten really tight. I was always doing ten, figuring about nine, ninety-five hundred to ninety-nine hundred dollars a person. That has went up, like I said, it's had about a twenty-two, twenty-three percent jump, just this year only. So, I'm hoping the two thousand will cover it for next year.
And how many, uh, tomorrow?
Um, I keep between twenty-eight and thirty-two, so I average at thirty sets. Three sets a year for every ten, every ten years where I place it, so. And that's, that's boots, coats, pants, helmets, everything.
Any other questions? All right, thank you chief.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec, Brandon Long.
Still notice most of, or somewhat, I guess, half of my line items have an increase, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, Parks and Rec.
Counsel, that is, uh, starting on page twenty-eight.
So we were able to, to decrease some line items such as the, uh, league support, that's for, uh, softball and baseball leagues, we were, somehow we had eleven thousand in there for last year, for this year. We, we do pay a lump sum to them for seven thousand in the fall, so seven thousand will come out of that. Uh, but if you go down to general maintenance and repairs, last year, or this year, we had forty thousand in, we're taking it down to thirty. But the park improvements were taken from ten thousand to forty thousand in the hopes of, uh, making some appearance improvements at a lot of our parks. But one of the things that aren't on here that I've been wearing Connie out about for a few months, trying to get a way to get it in our budget, is also, like Alvy said, is another mower. Uh, the difference between Alvy's mower, the mower that I want is substantially different in price. Uh, the mower that I need, or that I ask for is, uh, sixty-four thousand dollars, not seven thousand dollars. Eighty-five percent, I would say, is a good number of, of what we do is mowing in the Parks Department, we mow. I can't remember what Moe told me, it was like eighty-five acres a week, uh, we took on eleven new places to mow this year, uh, with Rick Poon. Not been able to do that stuff right now. But I've done time studies, I can, I can bore you for two hours on, on this mower, or I can give you the short version and, and tell you that when we mowed the practice football field before I came on board, it took over four hours for one guy to mow it by himself on a scag sixty-one inch mower. With the mower that we got earlier this year for, which is an eight foot, zero turn mower, one guy can mow that field in, in just under two hours, I think it's like an hour and forty-five minutes. Two of us mowed it today with two sixty-inch cuts, one's a sixty-one inch cut, one's sixty-inch cut. So we mowed it with ten-foot spans and it took an hour and ten minutes, but that was with two people mowing. I demoed this twelve-foot mower that I'm talking about and I mowed it by myself in thirty-nine minutes. So you, common sense, common math tells us, if you have two people running two five-foot mowers, you should be pretty efficient. If you had a ten-foot deck, you should be able to mow the same amount of grass, but that's not the case. Your efficiency level goes up dramatically based on your deck size and your mower speed, because it's less time you're turning around at the ends and things like that, so. I've got pages of time reports and everything else where I've, I've ran single sixty-inch cuts, a sixty with an eight foot, an eight foot, uh, with two sixties, as well as a twelve foot and an eight foot and a twelve foot and a five foot, so. I've done a lot of homework, if you guys are bored and you need something to put you to sleep at night, I can, I can send you a bunch of stuff. But in the end, it's, uh, the less time we're spending on mowers is the more time that we'll have to do the stuff that we're looking to do in the parks next year.
Counsel, any questions for Brandon on this, do you have, do you want to talk pool budget too while you're?
Yeah, but real quick on that, that is also not in this, so that's more cuts that Connie's not sure where it would come from.
So we'll approve that at another time if we do.
Yeah, I don't need an answer today, but, but, and I will say that if it, if we ordered it today, they hope that we could have it in March, so.
Yeah, it's like everything.
We would, we would order it whenever we got the approval and take delivery, kind of like Pat's trash truck, you know, when they, whenever they can get it to us.
Sure. Any questions, counsel? Thank you Brandon. Building and zoning, Steve's budget.
You want pool budget?
You want to do the pool budget, okay.
So a lot of things have changed on the pool budget, uh, one glaring thing is the, the operating supplies, which includes the acid and the chlorine, which went up dramatically. One bucket of chlorine, lasses, anywhere from one day to maybe a third of a day, so, and it's a hundred and seventy dollars for a five gallon pill. So that, that number really put us in the red this year. And then the other thing was the utilities with adding the splash pad, so the utility line item needed to go up to, to cover what it costs to run the splash pad. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of changes that I'm aware of. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on the pool budget?
Okay, all right.
Uh, no, those are coming in, operating supplies.
Category two. Which is in the red, seven thousand right now.
And I, I left it at twelve, we left it at twelve thousand five hundred to eighteen thousand, hoping that will cover us for next year.
So, fifty, fifty thousand is for what?
Uh, you repair a building and equipment in the pool, that is for any repairs that need to be done at the pool, uh, any new equipment in the compound or whatever that possibly they would need or need to have worked on.
We've got a shelter that was donated by the people who bought the Sonic building, if you remember that arch, kind of arched canopy, donated that to the city. So we had Whamco go and dismantle it, and it's, our intention is to reassemble that at the pool to provide shade, kind of where the baby pool used to be in that area. Right now, there's, there's no, really, other than the umbrellas, there's not a lot of shade for people, and so that's our intentions to reinstall that and make it extra amenity for people going to the pool, wanna get out of the sun. Which is important.
Maybe umbrellas for the tables, uh.
We'll have to buy a few more.
Lifeguard umbrellas, I know it makes sense since they're closed, that they need new lifeguard umbrellas next year, so.
It also covers the, uh, the big white filter that's behind the pump house, when you come down the hill right there on the right, the big old tank looking thing. So that's full of sand, that's what filters the water, uh, that needs to be redone, uh, and so it's a process of removing the confined space lid, uh, somebody crawling down in it. Pulling out all the sand, replacing it, replacing the baffles that are in it if they're, if they are broke, and it's also to cover the controller. Uh, right now, if that controller goes off at four-thirty in the afternoon and nobody's there, it stays in default, or stays in fail mode, so it's not feeding chlorine or acid until somebody gets there the next day. So then your chemical levels might not be right, so the new controller will actually send me a text message to tell me that something's going on that needs attention, so that's part of that fifty thousand also.
Parks director goes in that, gets all that sand out, right?
Uh, yeah, no, actually the mayor.
Oh, the mayor does, okay.
Either get tased or go in the filter.
I'd go in the filter. I'm not scared of that, I'm scared of that taser. Any other questions for Brandon? Thank you Brandon. Building and zoning, Steve, he's got the big budget, I'm telling you.
I'm asking for a two hundred and fifty dollar increase, and that is in office supplies. So, pretty simple.
Counsel, any questions for Steve on this? Steve's probably the least complicated budget of all.
It is, it's pretty simple.
All right, thank you Steve. All right, we have Tel City Police Department, Chief Lawland. His budget's complicated, Cam. It's very important.
All right, so, um, when you're looking at our budget, you'll notice that communications, um, that's our dispatch budget, so we have that and then we have the, the general police budget. So with the dispatch, um, mostly.
Dispatch is on thirty.
Yep, thirty-one.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Yep, so with the dispatch budget, it's, it's mainly unchanged from last year, uh, I was sharing with Connie just this morning about an email that we had gotten from our CAD vendor. They are having to change the way that they connect with the state server, um, so the cost of that change is going up ten thousand dollars, just to, just to establish that connection. So, um, those are things that, that come up with dispatch that seems like it's ever-changing, it's an astronomical expense to run that service. I will say that Connie's done a terrific job of, of trying to, um, track expenses with dispatch better than it's ever has before, so we're making some good progress there. So as far as that goes, that's a change that I anticipate us, speaking with the nine-one-one PSAT committee about, to figure out, um, whether we're gonna make an adjustment now or try to do, uh, an added expense later, an added appropriation. So they are aware of that, I shared that information with them today, so we'll see what the response is on that. Uh, but other than that, any questions on the dispatch side of it?
Where's the, uh, is the county's portion in here, where's the?
This just is our, the, the total.
This is the budget that we have, that the city has, this is not anything to do, the county doesn't pay any of these expenses. They pay towards these expenses, but we pay all these bills, they send us money.
This is the budget we base the agreement on.
Correct.
Which we approved on August the.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, whenever, yes. So I don't know how that goes, if the council does make any changes to this budget, if that has to go back to the county council again for them to approve. It's a new, new, new thing, and this is first year, second year, I guess, for this, so.
All right, any other, any questions on the dispatch, okay, so the, the general police budget, uh, again, really nothing too significant there, I don't think there's any increase requests at all on that. Uh, one, one area that we were able to save, um, on that is with our ballistic vest, uh, twenty-twenty-two was a, uh, big year for vest. Our, our vest, we rotate them out every five years, they actually have an expiration date on them, so we had, um, I'm thinking it was like ten vests that were due in twenty-twenty-two. So twenty-twenty-three will actually, uh, we don't have anybody do, so, uh, we were able to, uh, avoid budgeting that. Looking at the low-it options that we have here, one of the areas that we're gonna be watching closely, yes. Sorry.
Well.
If I'm looking at the, if you're looking at the police department budget on page.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. I show that's up about eighty-five thousand dollars.
And that's probably in, it's in the salaries.
Okay.
The salaries, and then, you know, when you do your salaries, that gets your, uh, it's your, it's your salary increase.
Yeah.
And also their, uh, police retirement, I just received word the other day that their retirement is going from seventeen point five percent to eighteen percent for twenty-twenty-three. So I had to go back in and, and re-figure all the, uh, retirement for the police officers.
Thank you.
Looking at the, um, local income tax, one area that we are watching closely, I think you'll find that on.
Page fifty is where it starts.
Yes, page fifty. The market for police cars right now, the only thing, um, certain about it is that, is that it's uncertain. It's, uh, quite a mess right now, uh, we, we can't get any, um, clear direction of where it's going, uh, traditionally, we have been buying Dodges. We, uh, recently tried to phase into Dodge Durangos, uh, what we are being told right now is they won't even take an order on Dodge Durangos. There are none on the ground ready for, um, for, for purchase, uh, we can't even order them, so, um, they just, nobody can guarantee anything, um, Chargers. Chargers, there's still a few of those, but I don't know if you've seen the news that, um, this is the last year that they are producing Dodge Chargers. So they're not making an exception for police cars, and we're also being told that, um, in twenty-twenty-four, the Dodge Durangos will be, um, switched over to electric. And that that's not gonna be, uh, an exception for police cars either, so we really don't know what the future holds for that. Uh, typically, we purchase two police cars a year, we budget it high, higher than normal, um, with, uh, low-it to anticipate, you know, any kind of, uh, changes or whatever we may have to face with this, so. We, we also have been trading in two or three police cars every time, you know, and, and we're, the, the used vehicles are holding more value than ever. So last year, we were able to get, uh, ten thousand, ten or eleven thousand dollars out of a, a car that we were decommissioning, uh, for, for no longer use, so. Might be surprised on what we may be able to do with that.
Have you bought police cars this year?
We are, uh, you mean per, for this?
For twenty-twenty, uh, two.
Yes, we, we did, we bought two Dodge Durangos for twenty-twenty-two, uh, we were able to trade in some, some Chargers for those. But we, we're not able to order Durangos for twenty-twenty-three. We've tried multiple dealerships just to kind of get an idea for quotes, nobody will even talk to us about it right now.
Just have to wait for them to show up and buy them?
Possibly.
If they do show up.
We're looking at, at whatever, you know, we, we try to buy two police cars a year, that helps with our. That helps with our expenses. If you don't rotate them out, then the, the maintenance costs get really high on them. Any other questions?
All right, Chief, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
You want to talk about the SRO?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the SRO. That is, you'll find it on?
D2 and 53.
Okay. And I don't think there was any increases on that, right, Connie?
Besides salary, I don't think so. And in fact, we did take out the SRO equipment.
Yes.
We had been having in there, because we discussed that, and you were not looking at purchasing any kind of large-ticketed item for the SRO officer.
Correct.
So that, that 10,000, we did remove.
If I'm looking at this correctly, the overall budget's down a little bit, about $5,000.
And that would be part of it, because we didn't put that in there.
So we have one SRO. The budget next year for that position is 88,000 plus. My understanding is the school pays part of that?
They, they pay us 50% of what the first-class patrolman salary is. Yes. And they also cover expenses of, of things like his, he goes to the conference every year, they, they cover that. So there's some continuing edge training, things like that they cover. And that, and, and they also cover 50% of the benefits as well. So insurance, retirement, those things.
We talked about this, or I talked with you about this. I think you told me they paid around 38,000 here.
It, it's, yes, it's right around 38, 39.
Okay.
And we base that off of what the salaries are at the start of the school year.
So it's costing the city roughly $50,000 here, that position. In that position, he spends part of his time at the elementary school, part of his time at the high school.
Correct.
And then in summer months, he's not on regular?
Yeah. Now, a lot of times in the summer, one of the things, since, since the SRO is one of our more senior officers with his time, we, we require him to use his PTO in the summer when school's out. So that way, he's not missing time in the school. Because, you know, under our contract, when we pull him out of school, we put somebody else in. So he tries to, so, so really, when you figure it out, we may have him for, you know, three weeks or so that we can really work him. We usually have him help us swatch or fast, things like that, cover some vacations.
So if we wanted to increase the SRO to provide two police officers, one full-time at the elementary and one full-time at the high school, basically, we'd need to come up with $90,000 roughly.
Yeah, with the, with the school's support of that, yeah. Getting them for a partnership times two, essentially.
I wish we'd had that unfortunately. I don't think we did.
Melanie, you know, I don't know if the school would help to fund a, a second officer.
We've had some discussion about it at the early, early on, and I think that that's something that is not in the budget for them right now. And I think that what we're doing is, is, is working on some other security measures, just to enhance security in the meantime. That may be something that we revisit and look at again, you know, sometimes.
I think the big discussions on school safety has been keeping the potential shooter out of the building, right? And whatever we can do to, to enhance or toughen up entries and windows and whatever else, that's where you get a lot of bang back for your buck. Keep the individual from getting in there.
Yeah. SRO is, having an SRO is certainly a layer, and it's something that, that we feel is, is very benefi- beneficial. But there's also important things like infrastructure, things like that, training employees at the school, and getting them familiar with the security process. All of those things combined is, is where it's at. So we're, we're really working closely with the school. We've done a couple of trainings over there this year. So things are, things are going really well so far.
Any other questions for Chief? All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That concludes all the department heads. Counsel, is there any discussion you want to have before we move on to the next item on the agenda?
Just to let the coun, I will let the council know that most positions there has been figured a 4% raise increase, and other than, with some exceptions. There have been some that were more of an increase, and a lot of that was based on the salary study that we received back from White and Urban in Shealy.
And so this, the, thank you, Connie, for all the work that you've done on this. And the letter you sent us about these budgets, and we need to cut 13,000, that's what we'll do at our future meetings?
Yes. Yes. That will give you guys, you all, time to look at your budget book. If you have any other questions on anything, you know, if you feel that, and I would like to, if you think about it and, and want to say, well, why don't you try to take one of these lawn mowers out of, out of one of these budgets, or a, a different fund or something, let me know, and I can work some of that up to see where we are on, like, unappropriated balances.
I'm curious, do you have a figure? You mentioned the overall, generally, a 4% increase was budgeted in this, in this request, or in these requests. Do you know approximately, how much does a 1% increase amount to, generally? Do you have a figure?
I do not. No.
Okay.
No, no.
Can you get that?
I could. A 1% increase?
Yeah, I, I just kind of know incrementally.
And I can, if I go back on the paperwork that Penny has worked out for me on this 4%, I may be able to give you a total of, of what that?
Okay.
Total amount increased in the.
I, I, I'm just kind of curious.
I just don't, just don't have that off the top of my head.
What the, what the difference is between 4% and 5%?
Okay.
Just curious.
Okay.
That'd be good to know.
Yeah? Okay. So at our next meeting, have some thoughts, suggestions of how to either fund Brandon's and Alvy's, both, those mowers were not figured into that budget. If you want to consider those, you'll have to cut some of those funds elsewhere to accommodate those, or obviously how to cut that 13,000 as well. So just.
And your budget book has all the funds in it that we do appropriate funds in at budget time. So, you know, if you're thinking, okay, well, maybe we could take it out of Riverboat or something, let me know, and I will work something up to see if it would work or not.
Okay. All right. Under new business, item B is your additional appropriation. Counsel, you should have a copy of that in your folders. It's a resolution. Do you want me to take care of this, Connie?
Yeah, because I'm trying to find what they need to.
I've got a cop, well, yours is a little different. Additional appropriation, resolution 2022-22. Whereas it is determined, determined that it is now necessary to appropriate additional funds beyond those that are appropriate in the annual budget. Now therefore, section one be ordained by the City of Telsi, Paragon, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit for the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified subject to laws governing the same. At a reserve fund, River Road Walking and Bike Trail, $275,000. Adopted as sixth date, September of 2022. And this is a resolution, so it only requires one reading. Are there any questions?
What, what is this for?
The River Road Project. So basically, it's for the walking trail to be extended currently as you go behind the flood wall on the, the wet side. It dead ends there as you kind of hit the port. This will extend it all the way up to Highway 66 with lighting, fencing.